Good evening. Chair calls to order Legislative Session Day 22-028. Please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Guthrie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you lift up those who are suffering, whether physically, financially, or emotionally, and fill them with your comfort. As we humble ourselves before you this evening in the council chambers, we seek your wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. With the peace of God surpasses all understanding, we guard our hearts and our minds in Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations, we have none. Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council appointments. Council, if there are no objections, I would request that we move all of these boards at one time. Board of Education Liaison, Councilman Guthrie; Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board, myself; Board of Estimates, myself; Councilman Jan Giordano; the Citizen Representative, Mr. Warren Hamilton, who is in the audience this evening; Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Councilman Riley; Economic Development Agricultural Advisory Board, Councilman Riley; Harford TV Advisory Board, Councilman Boyle Sodles; Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board, Councilman Pennman; Traffic Safety Advisory Board, Councilman Pennman. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Board of Education Liaison, Councilman Guthrie; Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board, President Vincenti; Board of Estimates, President Vincenti; Alternate Councilman Jan Giordano; Citizen Representative Warren Hamilton; Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Councilman Riley; Economic Development Agriculture Advisory Board, Councilman Riley; Harford TV Advisory Board, Councilwoman Boyle Sodles; Mental Health and Action Advisory, Councilman Pennman; and Traffic Safety Advisory Board, Councilman Pennman.
Thank you. You may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved to the second to approve the council appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Executive Appointments, Department Directors. County Executive Castle has sent over four more names for appointments to director positions. Mr. Blumquist, County Attorney; Mr. Greenwell, Director of Procurement; Mr. Grimm, Director of Planning and Zoning; and Mr. Slifka, Director of Community Services. And due to the timing, none of the council members have had an opportunity to sit and interview these individuals, so we're not going to act on that tonight. We're going to hold it and maybe bring it back again next week, so as long as there's no objections. Thank you. Agenda number six, Special Presentations, there are none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Legislative Day 22-027, December 6, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions, we have none. Number nine, Introduction of Bills. Council Vice President, please read in Bill 22-025.
Bill 22-025, Revisions to Harford County, Article I, Chapter 4, Legislative Branch, introduced by Council President Vincenti and Council Members Guthrie, Pennman, Jan Giordano, Riley, Boyle Sodles, and...
Bennett.
Bennett. That's not... An Act to repeal and reenact with amendments Article I, Legislative Branch of Chapter 4, Administration of Government of the Harford County Code, as amended to provide for a comprehensive revision to reflect changes made by Charter Amendments in Bill 76-30, Bill Number 80-40, Bill Number 82-42, Bill Number 82-51, Bill Number 84-44, Bill Number 87-51, Bill Number 88-32, Bill Number 88-33, Bill Number 88-34, Bill Number 96-37, Bill Number 12-29, Bill Number 12-31, Bill Number 12-32, Bill Number 14-17, Bill Number 14-18, Bill Number 22-005, Bill Number 22-007, and Charter Amendment by Petition in 2000, all approved by the voters of Harford County to delete all gender reference language and substitute in lieu thereof appropriate gender-neutral language to correct obsolete references and punctuation errors generally relating to legislative branch. Public hearing scheduled for January 10, 2022, 6:30 p.m. in these chambers.
2023.
2023.
Thank you, Councilmen. Agenda number 10, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments, we have none. 11, Call for Final Reading of Bills, we have none. 12, Enrollment of Bills, we have none. 13, Unfinished Business, we have none. 14, Council, you have before you Executive Order 22-04, Housing Community Development. This order shall become effective 60 days from the day the county executive signs it, unless council has four votes objecting to the executive order. And as the appointments earlier, we received this recently and have not had an opportunity to go through it thoroughly, so again, we will hold this tonight, if there are no objections, and speak to it next week. Council? Thank you. I'd like to go to Agenda Item Number 17, Comments and Input from Attending Citizens. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have five this evening.
Before you call your first speaker, again, we're going to be mindful of our time, we're going to be respectful of one another, and we are not going to speak to anything to do with District F this evening in the chambers because it's ongoing litigation. So if that's what you're going to speak to, I will stop you immediately and go from there. Call your first speaker.
Barbara Kramer, followed by Ron Stucinski.
May I apply my apologies to Mr. Gibbons, to the chairman of the Republican Party, before I do? That be all.
Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Gibbons is signed up this evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Henry Gibbons. Henry Gibbons, 2402 Papaya Road, Edgewood. President Vincenti, Vice President Jan Giordano, Councilman Guthrie, Councilman Pennman, Councilman Riley, Councilwoman Boyle Sodles, and Councilman Bennett. On behalf of the Harford County Democratic Central Committee, or your loyal opposition in many cases, I congratulate you on your assumption of the office that you now hold. Each of you was elected by the citizens of your district or by the citizens of the county who entrusted you with the slice of the future of this county that you now have the opportunity and the responsibility to influence. I trust that you will take that responsibility seriously, that you will look out for the interests of all of the voters of the county, not just the ones who voted for you, and we entrust you with the sacred duty of exemplifying the representative democratic process in this chamber. In electing you, we've entrusted you with preserving, protecting, and building the institutions of our county. We trust that you will continue to model civility in this chamber, as President Vincenti has ably done during some very trying times. We trust that you will utilize the best available knowledge, data, and information resources to make responsible decisions on behalf of the people you represent, and that you will add to the rational enlightenment of decision-making process a moral sensibility born from the principle that what you do for the least among us, you do for all. With this principle in mind, I will enumerate a few charges, a few of our charges for you as our representatives. We charge you with crafting legislation that benefits all of the people of Harford County, and we ask that you pay particular heed to those voices in our communities who call for the rectification of wrongs, for greater justice, and for their humanity to be fully respected. We charge you to address transportation infrastructure in a way that looks forward rather than backward into our automobile besotted past, to help expand public transit and access options, and give the ability of seniors and students and those who currently do not have the option of driving a car, to participate in public discourse such as what we have here tonight. We charge you to fully resource our school systems and to ensure that the opportunities it confers are spread evenly across the county. We charge you to achieve a balance of economic activity with the protection of the undeveloped spaces, the green infrastructure, if you will, of this county, in all of its districts, so that all of the citizens of this county can continue to enjoy the natural beauty that makes Harford County such a desirable place to live. We thank you for taking on the heavy responsibility of public office, and we will be looking forward to seeing the results of your terms, and we wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue, Aberdeen. First, I'd like to welcome our new council members, and welcome back Tony and Pat. Appreciate what all you guys are doing to have done to get elected. Through the election process, we've gotten to know many of you, and I can promise you with extreme confidence, we know who all of you are and where you stand in the Harford County system. After the failures of the Glassman administration to help many of the citizens of our county achieve the code, Harford County Code, I hope over the next four years, you all serve honorably and for the residents of your districts. The days of self-interest in governing in Harford County must be gone. I'm sure many, hopefully all of you, are aware of why we have been coming to these meetings every week for the past year. We have played our concerns through facts, provided multiple maps, forms of documentation, and real data statistics of the dangers that our community and Perryman face. In case you're unaware, the Perryman wellfields provide water to 30% of our county. That's roughly 80,000 men, women, and children. I've asked numerous council meetings for any information that the council may have on who exactly receives water from our wellheads. I have got nothing. I also asked if these residents have been notified of the significance of the illegal freight development that may be sitting on top of these wellheads. Nothing. This water was previously contaminated, as documented, numerous times, and there has yet to be a study done in the past 20-plus years. So that means basically since these original warehouses were built years ago, there's still been no studies. Why are the requests for these studies being ignored by the county? I'm hoping that the new county council can find out for us. Or do we just continue to treat this like they did in Flint, where 81,000 residents, literally the same, that are going to be affected by us? Our wellheads face contamination. Numerous failed requests from their residents and citizens led to the contamination of their water. The result so far, 79 lawsuits, 15 of their officials have been indicted, seven charged with 34 felonies, two have been charged with involuntary manslaughter, 12 residents have died, 87 still fighting for their life, and as of last year, 641 million have been paid in settlements. Last, my man Tony J. You gave a comment last week about traffic in Bel Air, and I want to help maybe clear this up, as how we see it in Perryman, what we deal with. It's 7.1 miles to get to the peninsula. Only 1.4 miles, so that's Route 40, two-lane highway. It's covered by tractor trailers and basically Indy car drivers. The other five and a half miles is one lane for us between 30 and 40 miles an hour, and that's one way in and one way out. So that gets kind of complicated for us. Bel Air, there's 47 miles of roadway to get in and out of here. Again, I'm not trying to create an argument, but I'm trying to compare that the current traffic in one area doesn't justify moving forward with potentially more bad traffic in another. If anything, it should show with the lack of proper planning is done, and hopefully we can work together as a council and a committee to help with the infrastructure problems that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Kramer, followed by Emma Peller.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Osborne Kramer. I live in Aberdeen, and my address is on file with the council secretary.
I need your address, ma'am.
I beg your pardon?
I need your address.
701 Beards Hill Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think I heard you say a minute ago that the citizens may not address the topic of District F?
Yes, ma'am.
Under what authority did you limit the topics?
It is an ongoing piece of litigation.
You don't have... Nobody's asking you to comment. We're just asking you to listen. And as my understanding is, that government may limit the time, place, and manner of speech, but may not limit the content. But your attorney is here. Maybe you want to take a minute to consult with him.
Ma'am, I've already talked with him. We're not going to discuss ongoing litigation in this chamber this evening.
I'm not asking you to discuss.
And I'm not going to repeat myself again, ma'am.
I just want you to listen to what I have to say. Under what authority is that? What's your authority for saying that I can't talk about? It's not going to be a jury trial.
President.
And certainly, it's a matter of public discourse in the community. Well, you had about 100% of the people speaking last week in favor of the councilman from District F being seated. And I don't really think there's a controversy about whether he won the election or whether he's to be seated. He is. But it is an interesting question about whether his profession can be practiced at the same time. And there's more than one way of looking at it.
Ms. Kramer.
There's more than one way of looking at the invitation.
With all due respect, just stop.
I really don't think you can do that. I mean, there's a question of people who may serve on juries, may hear conversation in a community, but this is not going to be an issue before a jury. There's more than one way to deal with a public question, and we are going to be working with each other throughout the coming term. And therefore, it would have been a good idea for the people who control that ceremony to think about other ways that that could have been approached. And to begin in such a negative way is very unfortunate. But other ways to look at it include that we had an election, the election has not been questioned, and we in Harford County don't want to move over into the territory of denying the outcomes of legitimate elections.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road, Bel Air.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and Council Members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I would like to address Section I, Subsection 4 of the Council Rules of Procedure. This section reads, "Comments permitted to be made by citizens during Agenda Item 17 are generally permissive, except that matters which are subject of a public hearing, such as bills, may not be addressed until the legislative session day which follows final action on the matter, and pending zoning cases may not be addressed until concluded and the expiration of all appeal rights has occurred. I ask tonight that the council considers altering this policy to allow citizens to discuss any upcoming bills that the council will be voting on. It does not make sense to me that citizens can stand in front of this council and discuss matters that have nothing to do with them, but not upcoming bills. The council must understand this, at least partially, as this policy has been unevenly enforced over the past year. For example, citizens were allowed to discuss Bill 22-003 at every council meeting from introduction to conclusion. Please take this into consideration and allow citizens to discuss what they choose to during their public comments. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am.
The last speaker this evening is Kate McDonald.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kate McDonald. I'm at 2100 Park Beach Drive. And welcome to the new council members. Economic development is the creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. It's more than a jobs program. It's an investment in growing an economy and enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all the residents, especially those in the development area. The intent of economic development is to build up, not to pick the poorest, most disinvested portion of the county and start dumping freight distribution centers in it, then taking that increased revenue and spending it on land preservation and infrastructure in the other more affluent areas of the county. Economic development is meant to bring positive and equitable investment to the area in which it happens, and nothing positive or equitable is coming to Perryman with this project. Nothing. Neither developer nor the landowner can give you one positive impact for Perryman residents. That's because there is not one. For years, Harford County has been dumping freight distribution centers in Perryman without any thought to how it's impacting the residents, their property values, their quality of life, and their health and safety. You've not taken any of the added tax revenue and made any additional investment into mitigating the environmental and infrastructure issues these developments have created in Perryman. To you guys, this is an enterprise zone, but to us, it's home. And it's been home for many of us way before it was an enterprise zone. We will do whatever is within our power to fight this, forever how long it takes. We've stood up here for the last year and told each of the council members that these zoning practices and policies are in fact disproportionate and discriminatory, and that the harm and injustice you are inflicting on the Perryman residents that have to deal with this wreckage on a daily basis is irreparable and needs to stop with this project. And in fact, we are starting to see other municipalities all over the region starting to take a second look at what these types of developments are doing versus the social and environmental impacts on the minority and lower-income areas they are targeted by developers. I feel like it's incumbent upon this new council to do the same. The people of Perryman, regardless of their socioeconomic or ethnic status, deserve the same thought and care that you would give if this horrific plan was to be built in your neighborhood. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. We'll go to Business from the President, Agenda Item 15. Over the past few months, Ms. Dixon and the staff here at the council office have been working with Harford TV IT in order to bring closed captioning service for our community here, and I'm happy to report that they're saying January, but I'm thinking by February 1st, it will be in place so that all of our citizens can participate in a sense in the meetings. I want to congratulate the Harford County Sheriff's Office and their partners, Ron Filling, Fred Anderson, Mike and his family at Friendship Wine and Liquors, the Punishers Motorcycle Group, for another fantastic 40th Annual Toy Drive this past Saturday. I'm sure others will speak to it. I want to just briefly touch on our ATF meeting that we had this past Thursday evening. School enrollment numbers seem to be up a little bit. School capacities are opening up in some areas. We have a couple of new schools, renovations at Homestead Wakefield that seem like they're going to be moving forward, and also a new school proposed out at Campus Hills area. So we'll have a full report coming in the very near future from Mr. Cornell Brown, who does our minutes at the meetings. We are continuing to interview county executive appointments for directors, and now we have a list of deputy directors and resumes. Council members will be handling and starting through those interviews. And then, before I forget again, I think I mentioned Warren Hamilton being in the audience tonight. Warren has done an outstanding job for many, many years, serving as a citizen representative on the Board of Estimates. There's no doubt in my mind he will continue to do that. Now, the council has confirmed that. He has an outstanding mind and insight to contractors and different projects that come before the Board of Estimates, and he's never hesitated to speak up when he sees something in question, and I appreciate that. Thank you for being here tonight. Also, the county executive called just a little bit ago to ask me to announce that, per the legislation passed to Maryland General Assembly, the county executive is tasked with appointing three volunteer positions to the Harford County Board of Education with confirmation by the Harford County Council. For those that are interested, the application can be found online at Harford County Government's webpage, harfordcountymaryland.gov, and under Government Boards and Commissions. The application process will remain open now and until January 13, 2023. So if anyone's interested, I know we have gotten several calls, please look that up and sign up. And with that, council members, Agenda Number 16, I believe it is. Business from council members. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I've had a number of phone calls and emails. The people at the swearing-in ceremony, people asked me what I was carrying in my right hand, and I just thought I'd let everybody know, since I got so many calls about it. It was a Bible, and it was a Bible that belonged to my daughter. Because when I was on the council before and served three terms, she was there for all three terms, and fortunately, she couldn't be here for this one. She passed away on 2019, the day before Thanksgiving, after a two-and-a-half-year battle with cancer. So I brought her so she would be there, at least, with her Bible. Also, I've had, being a senior myself, and this will have no effect on me whether it ever gets changed or not, but a number of senior citizens called me about the bill that the previous council passed in regards to a tax credit for citizens who have lived 35 years or more in one house, and they're going to get a tax break. I understand the reason for it being drafted that way because of the cost. So what I'm trying to do is find out how much it will cost to do it full bore, because it... My opinion, I think that the bill discriminates against some of our senior citizens. In fact, if there's a citizen that's lived here for 50 years and they've lived in three different houses, they get no tax break. But if you get somebody who's lived in one house for 35 years, they get a tax break, even though the other person might have lived in three houses or more. They've paid a lot more money in fees and transfer tax, all that combined, in other houses, whereas the person that hasn't moved, it's probably a lower cost and lower taxes and everything else. So anyway, I just want everybody to know, the ones that have been calling me, I'll take a look at that, and will have no bearing on me anyway, because regardless of how you change it, I wouldn't be affected. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Guthrie, Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two issues I'd like to discuss. The first, I mentioned last week, an issue that community members expressed about Old Mountain Road Central. The Office of District Peak has begun scheduling meetings to understand those concerns. The second subject of my comments pertains to the Executive Order 2204 introduced this evening under New Business Concerning Housing and Community Development. Currently, community and economic development and housing are under one umbrella, which is the Office of Community and Economic Development. The executive order proposes to split that office into two departments, Economic Development and Housing and Community Development. On the surface, I don't disagree that they are two different classifications, but I'm trying to understand the purpose behind the request. My main concern is the cost to taxpayers should you split the departments by adding a new director and director's salary. In addition, reading over the powers and duties of each proposed department, there seems to be several duties that overlap both departments, such as cooperating with partner agencies to further the purpose of housing and community development, participating in federal and state fund housing programs, and accepting grants from state and federal governments to support affordable housing in Harford County. So my initial thoughts, if they are doing the same job, why split them up, costing taxpayers and increasing the size of government? If the issue is pass reduction of that particular office, I'm confident that those changes can be made with direction and mission rather than classification at the taxpayers' expenses. Having these expressed concerns, Council President and I spoke with the Chief of Executive Staff for the county executive. I thank the Chief- I thank the Chief of Staff for listening to those concerns and look forward to learning more about the Executive Order. And with that, that's all I have. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Gian Giordano.
Thanks, Council President. I would like to congratulate Michael Altazuski on achieving his equal count raking, and then I also like to congratulate the Bel Air High Football Team, as well as the Patterson Mill Football Team for making the state quarterfinal rounds. I actually attended a couple of the Bel Air High School football games, a couple of playoff games, and I'd like to congratulate Coach Eric Siegel and his group for a great season. They were undefeated, unfortunately. They weren't able to take that undefeated season into the playoffs and win. So they both had looked forward to next season, and I also like to thank Patterson Mill Volleyball. They also reached the quarterfinal. On another note, on a little bit more of a safety issue, I've talked to the Chief of Police of Bel Air. He has informed me that he's going to have one of his new people patrolling and making sure that if people are parked in the handicap signs or the fire zones, they will be ticketed. This has gone on. I know there's not a lot of people here, but this will get out. Hopefully, the EATs will pick it up. But people are parking all the time to pick up their food orders in fire lanes. It's not acceptable. It needs to stop. They will be ticketed. I've had people say, "Well, what's the reason? You're only in there for a couple of minutes." Well, the reason is, if there's an emergency, then we've got a problem. And if you park in a handicap zone, that means somebody who's actually handicapped has to now park further away, and some people cannot walk and cannot do it. So I'm here to warn you, they're going to be out, they're going to ticket you. It's $140 for a handicap, and fire's $120. And if you want, call the police, like I've done, and I'll continue to call the police. If you're parking illegally, I'm going to call on you. So, Council President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gian Giordano. Mr. Riley.
First, I'd like to congratulate Harford Tech Wrestling, winning this past weekend. They're number one in the state. Also, I got the privilege of doing my first ribbon cutting as a councilman at the Jones Junction. Continue to wish them success. Also, this week, I got my first proclamation in my District D with Trellis Services. It's a unique agency that teaches children with autism. That learning can be fun, playful, and an interactive experience. I also was at Rockville Christmas party prior to coming here, and wish them continued success. And, Mr. Hamilton, we appreciate your past service and your continued service.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. I wanted to go over a couple of things. The list of appointments that we received this week, I personally don't know any of the individuals, but I look forward to interviewing or meeting with them, learning a little bit more about them, and their visions and goals for our county. I have that happening in the upcoming days. The new bill, I would second Councilman Pennman. You know, I have a couple of questions as far as, how many people will we be hiring that will be doing that job in those departments? We did have one person doing the job before the new executive came in, and, you know, what are the costs to the taxpayers at the end of the day? So I have a couple of questions on that, and I look forward to learning more. As far as things happening in my district, Harford Family House in Aberdeen is accepting donations for items needed for their community. You can shop on Amazon, they have a wish list, and you can check out their website. And then, last thing is, Plan Aberdeen's Planning Commission meeting and public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow at 7:00 PM. This planning commission will be held for the city's comprehensive plan update, so it'll be open to the public, and I would urge you to try and attend if that's in your neighborhood. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. This past week, my wife Abby and I attended a fundraiser for the Lock House in Havity Grace at the Van Diver, and it was a beautiful event. We got to sit next to Eric and Debbie. Eric's a retired special needs bus driver here in Harford County, and plays violin on his porch. So if you ever are walking down our street at 300 block, getting some bomb boys, you can listen to him play violin. The Candlelight Tour took place this weekend in Havity Grace. It was the 50th anniversary, which is, you know, it's a really special community event, absolutely beautiful. You know, it's rare that you get to live inside a Hallmark movie, but we do it one month a year, every year. And I just wanted to make sure I send appreciation to my legislative aide, Heather. You know, we, in our office, still do not have email addresses, but Heather has been working very hard to handwrite everybody who communicates with us. Right now, if you send an email to the county council, it gets printed out and handed to Heather, and then it's almost like you're sending a fax, really. But Heather has been helping me with communicating. So if you do reach out to us currently, make sure that you communicate your address, that we have a way to communicate with you. If you don't put your home address in the email, until we get email addresses, we can't reach you, and when we run out of stamps, we're going to have to order carrier pigeons in order to reach you. So hopefully, that all gets straightened out shortly, so that we can communicate via email with you all. A few community events I wanted to promote. These first three are happening this Saturday, the 17th. The Havity Grace Youth Arts Program and Holiday Carolings, happening from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the Cultural Arts Center at the Opera House. On that same day, it's going to be Reefs Across America at the Angel Hill, Mount Aaron, and St. James Semataries. You can sign up to volunteer, or you can sponsor a reef at reefsacrossamerica.org. That same day, it's the last farmer's market of the season, from 8:30 to 12 at Hutchins Park in Havity Grace. I've heard that they're going to try and do some winter farmer's market by the Star Center, but I don't have the dates for that yet. And then, the 19th, so that coming Monday, APG is hosting a Hanukkah celebration from 11:30 to 12:30 at the Main Post Chapel. So that's an opportunity for those who celebrate Hanukkah, or just want to take part in the celebration to enjoy that event. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I believe that'll bring us to a close. Appreciate everyone's comments, and thank you for coming this evening. Be adjourned.